Evening, everyone. It's Planning Commission Meeting for October 20th, 2021. I'd like to introduce DeCarlo Brown, who will be our moderator for this evening's meeting, and he's going to go over some of the rules, regulations, and etiquette for Zoom meetings. DeCarlo?
Good evening. My name is DeCarlo Brown, Planner 3 with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I'll be acting as moderator this evening. I'd like to let you know this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, for record keeping purposes. For those attending virtually, please keep yourself muted until you are ready to speak to avoid any interruptions. If you're calling in, you can mute and unmute yourself by using the buttons on your cell phone or by dialing *6. For those of you on a computer, you can mute and unmute your audio or video by moving your mouse then using the buttons in the toolbar in the bottom left of your screen. You can also mute and unmute yourself by using keyboard shortcuts. On Windows, press Alt+A. On Mac, press Command+Shift+A. For those attending virtually, if you would like to speak while someone is speaking, please use the Raise Hand function. It will notify me, the moderator, that you'd like to speak. Then I can call on you. It is very important that you use the Raise Hand function. If you do not, you will not get a chance to speak. If you're calling in, you can raise and lower your hand by dialing *9. If you're on a computer, you can raise and lower your hand by going into the Participants menu. You can also raise or lower your hand by using keyboard shortcuts on Windows, press Alt-Y, and/or Mac, Option-Y. For those attending in person, please wait until a public comment has been requested. At that point, please raise your hand, and you will be called upon in turn. Finally, please say your name every time you speak, for the benefit of those calling in who cannot see you. Does anyone have any questions about using Zoom or Zoom etiquette before we get started? Seeing no hands raised or any in the crowd, Mr. Conover, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The time is now 7:51. Commissioner Jones may begin.
Good evening. The time is 7:51. As Paul stated, it's October 20th, 2021. This is the Planning Commission regularly scheduled meeting. I'll now take roll call. Vice Chair Bueller.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Kernan.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Richard Holler.
Here.
Commissioner John Tuohy.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Williams.
Here.
And Commissioner Wilson Freeland.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. Mr. Conover.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item 2 is recognitions of persons attending this meeting. From County Planning and Zoning this evening, we have Mary Beth Cook, our Director, Jenny Plummer Welker, AICP and Long Range Planner, Christine Finnamore, Principal Planner, Olivia Vedotto, Planner 3, Ruth David Rogers, Planner 2, Becky Parkinson, Planning Commission Clerk. Attending from County Public Works staff is James Ritter, Enterprise Fund Operations Deputy Director. And also attending with us is John Mattingly, providing legal counsel. And as mentioned previously, Becky Parkinson, serving as a reporting clerk. And moderating is DeCarlo Brown, Planner 3. Moving on to item 3, Actions on Proposed Agenda. Commissioner Jones?
Do we have any action on a proposed agenda?
Motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Tuohy. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Conover.
Thank you. Item 4 is Actions on Minutes. 4A is minutes from September 15th, 2021. Commissioner Jones?
Any changes that need to be made to these minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we postpone taking action on the minutes of September 15th until later on in the meeting.
Just for the benefit of the other commissioners, can you specify why, Commissioner Freeland?
I believe that the actions of the exec session will impact the minutes of September 15th.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Freeland to postpone the approval of the minutes.
Until what... I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones interrupted. To what point in the meeting would you like to move that? We could add that to the minutes for the meeting?
Immediately after the exec session. We come back in after the exec session.
Yeah, so, all right.
Motion to delay until the minutes, approval of the minutes, until after the executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tuohy. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
If we could just do another motion to approve the agenda as amended, please.
My original motion still stands. With the correction.
Thank you.
I have a second.
Do we need to take roll call now, Paul?
Yes, sir.
Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
It's a mouthful. Mr. Conover.
Item 5 is then executive session, sir. We need a motion and a second.
Yep. So per the general provisions, Article Section 3-305 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, I motion that the Planning Commission go into the exec session, which will be closed to the public, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice per Section 3-305B subsection 7. And I need a second for that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Freeland. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland. Mr. Conover, I'll turn it over to you to allow, let us know when we're squared away.
So commissioners will receive an alert on your screen for a breakout room. Please accept.
At this point, I think all the commissioners are in the executive session. They will announce when they are back.
Okay, everyone, we're coming back. Everybody should be coming back now shortly. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Here.
One more. All right, Commissioner Jones, everyone is here.
All right, I will entertain a motion to restart the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland. Commissioner Freeland, you're muted, sir.
Sorry, yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Conover.
Thank you. I'll move on to item 6, which is Address Appeal for REplat 2023-44 and Possible Reconsideration. On September 15th, 2021, the Planning Commission heard an appeal of address related to REplat 2022-44. A motion to deny the motion was made, seconded, and acted upon, and the motion failed. The motion failed. The Burches, who are the applicants, were told that they could keep their addresses, the motion to deny had not passed. Upon staff review of the September 15th meeting, staff discovered that the motion to deny was not accurate and that there was no motion to deny that the motion to deny the appeal would have been more appropriate. For clarity and out of abundance of caution, staff request the Planning Commission revisit the motion through a reconsideration.
Thank you, Mr. Conover.
Welcome, sir.
I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to introduce a motion to reconsider item number 6 at tonight's meeting.
I have a motion. Go have a second.
I guess I've been bad.
Commissioner Tuohy, I believe, seconded that. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
The motion carries. Mr. Conover.
Okay, thank you. Do you want any discussion, Commissioner Jones? I don't have anything more to report.
Well, I want to apologize to the Burch family, I believe. This was an administrative faux pas on our part, and I just, on behalf of the board and specifically myself, I apologize for wasting another evening of your time. So my apologies.
Now that there's a reconsideration, a motion would be proper.
Motion for reconsideration?
No, that is not, not a, that was past.
Okay.
Motion on the item would be acceptable.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion in favor of the property owners keeping the historical address of the property.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kernan, a second by Commissioner Freeland, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
No.
Commissioner Tuohy.
No.
Commissioner Williams.
No.
What's our vote?
Dr. Holler?
No.
No. We're 3-3 again, I think.
You are.
And I am in favor of the property owners, yes.
So motion carries. Okay. Are you ready to move on, sir?
Yes, sir. Move on. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on our agenda is item 4, the Action on Minutes, which was moved to this portion of the meeting. These are the September 15th, 2021, regular meeting minutes. Commissioner Jones? I believe Commissioner Freeland had some comments on it previously.
Go ahead, Commissioner Freeland. My apologies.
Yeah, thank you. On item 9A, down where the motion was made by Mr. Tuohy, the minute should read "The Motion Failed" 3 to 4. Other than that, I would motion to accept the minutes with the change.
I have a motion by Commissioner Freeland?
I would second Commissioner Freeland's motion.
Second by Commissioner Tuohy, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
I have a question.
Please.
Mr. Freeland, when you say the motion failed, you mean where it says the motion was denied but failed? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir. The second sentence in that line where the motion carried, that's incorrect.
Okay.
Item in bold. If we could start to, if we could just do the roll call vote again, please, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy?
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. That was a little confusing. Mr. Conover.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 7, Town Center Architectural Actions. There are none for this evening. Item 8, Major Subdivisions for Final Actions. Again, none to be speak of. Item 9, Applications for Site Plan Review. None to go over. And item 10, Major Subdivision Applications for Preliminary Actions. Again, there are none on the agenda this evening. That brings us to item 11, which is Items of Discussion and Actions. There are three this evening. Item 11A is SD 138-121, Rebecca Fields, Slots 1 through 14, or Tax Map 18, Parcel 18. And Christine Finnamore, our Principal Planner for Planning and Zoning, is our presenter this evening. Christine?
Good evening. I do need the ability to share my screen, please. From the host.
DeCarlo?
Christine, please try now.
Okay.
Christine, I don't see anything coming up yet, so I'm gonna pull up on my...
I'm working on it, Paul, please.
Oh, got it, okay.
I just had to switch screens. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, fellow staff, and members of the public. My name's Christine Finnamore, Principal Planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I'm here tonight to present a portion of a project that you've seen before, excuse me, called Rebecca Fields, in a little more detail to you for a specific approval, proposed disturbance of steep slopes within 100 feet of a stream, and also the expanded stream buffer, both of which are under Article 8 of the Calver County Zoning Ordinance. So just to refresh everyone's memory, this is Cox Road, and the site is...
Christine, we're not seeing, we're not seeing your screen.
You're not seeing anything?
No. I could pull it up here. There we go.
Okay, if you could go back to Slide 1.
That is Slide 1.
It's not the Slide 1, the more recent. So if you... I don't know why.
Okay, I got it. Give one second.
I have the preliminary plan. It's on Slide 1. And there's a red circle in the middle.
Yep, I got it. One second. Coming up?
Yep. Okay, and there's only two slides, so this should be easy. All right, let's try this again. Do you see my pointer or no?
No, because I'm sharing my screen.
I do.
Yeah, I see it.
That's me. That's Paul moving around.
Okay.
So Christine, you can go.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what screen people are seeing, so I'm just gonna pull up Zoom. Because I'm, sorry, I apologize. My notes are in one spot, and it covers up the Zoom. So I'll start over. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, fellow staff, and members of the public. My name's Christine Finnamore, Principal Planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I'm here tonight to present a portion of the project you've seen before, called Rebecca Fields, in a little more detail to you for a specific approval, proposed disturbance of steep slopes within 100 feet of a stream, and also an expanded stream buffer, both of which fall under Article 8 of the Calver County Zoning Ordinance. The project is located, I don't know if you see my cursor, off of Cox Road, just east of Maryland 24 in Honeytown. The preliminary subdivision plan, which is on the screen, was reviewed by the Planning Commission in June of 2021 and shows a stormwater management easement within open space, which is between Proposed Lots 4 and 5, and that's circled on the plan you see on the screen. While the easement implies disturbance or construction of a stormwater management area, this was not specifically discussed with the preliminary plan staff report. So we wanted to bring it back to you this evening for additional detail, now that additional detail is available. So just to give you a little bit of background, any disturbance of steep slopes within 100 feet of a stream is required to have Planning Commission approval in accordance with Calver County Zoning Ordinance Section 8-204B. And any, Section 8-206B2, development adjacent to perennial and intermittent streams requires Planning Commission approval if you are opposing to impact them. If you can go to Slide 2, please, Paul. It's got the, it's the drainage area map, before and after.
Should be up.
Does everyone see Slide 2?
Yes.
Okay. So now that the engineering plans for construction of the roads are currently under review, we have a little more detail for grading stormwater management and sediment road control. And we wanted to present this to you, this particular area for approval. There's an area of steep slopes and expanded stream buffers that are proposed to be disturbed in order to construct a grade stabilization structure. This is the same area shown as a stormwater management easement on the subdivision plans used on June. Section 8-204 of the ordinance, it pertains to erodible soils adjoining streams and steep slopes 25% or greater adjoining streams. In particular, there are seven conditions for lots being created after 2006. Number 3 states that the Planning Commission or its designated must approve that steep slopes can be graded out less than 25% for construction of roads to provide access to lots. And then there's three other conditions that would, I'm sorry, four other conditions that would apply if the Planning Commission so chooses that. Then the next section is 8-206B2, and it's development adjacent to perennial and intermittent streams. And that section basically says, when stormwater management cannot be located outside of the stream buffer, stormwater management devices may be placed in the buffer with approval from the Planning Commission for site plans and subdivisions. The engineering consultant for the project is Howlinson, Olis, and Associates, and they did provide some information and an explanation for this device. And in a moment, I'll let the engineering consultant speak to that. But they basically said it's a grade stabilization structure for USDA Natural Resources Service Code 410. The purpose of the device is to reduce the post-development runoff volume to below the pre-development conditions. What you see on the screen is one page out of the road engineering plan. It's the drainage area map, and it shows essentially the before and after. And there's an area that's labeled in hot scene that is pointing to the area of steep slopes and also the expanded stream buffer that we're speaking through. The whole area is highlighted in green to give you a little, I know there's a lot of information going on in this plan, but that's the area we're talking about. So just to conclude my presentation, the applicant seeks approval to disturb steep slopes in 100 feet of a stream in order to address grade stabilization and improve runoff as part of the subdivision plan and run road engineering plan. Planning staff have reviewed the project and recommends approval with the conditions set forth in the zoning ordinance under 8-204. This ends my presentation. I'm happy to field any questions. I will also introduce Jeff Martis, who is with Howlinson, Olis, and Associates, and he's on the meeting and is available for any questions as well.
Christine, would you like me to leave the pictures up?
I, it will probably be useful, yes.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Christine has, Soul Conservation commented on this.
They are one of the agencies that does review the road engineering plan specific to this area. They do have comments, and, and plan revisions have been made based on their comments. Where they're in, where they're at in their review, I'm not certain. The road plans are not approved yet. They are still under review.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For the record, that was Commissioner Freeland. Anyone else? Any other commissioners? Christine, thank you. Great presentation. Do I have a motion?
Commissioner Jones, there's one hand raised for Mr. Martis.
My apologies, please. Allow him to speak.
Hello, this is Jeff Martis. Just to answer Mr. Freeland's question, NRCS and SCD folks have reviewed this device, and we've gotten verbal approval yet. And of course, we're still waiting. We're going through the review process. We don't have approval through all the agencies yet, but they have reviewed it, and so far, they don't have any problems with our design. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else waiting to be heard on this note?
I do not see anyone on my screen, DeCarlo.
The only hand up still up is Mr. Jeff Martis, his hand just went down.
Okay, commissioners? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion regarding SD 138-121, Rebecca Fields. We approve with staff recommended conditions listed above.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, a motion by Commissioner Tuohy, a second by Commissioner Freeland, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler. Commissioner Holler. Commissioner Tuohy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
And can we check on Commissioner Holler?
Commissioner Holler, you're muted. If you can unmute. You still had enough votes for the motion to pass it. We don't want to wait any longer for Commissioner Holler.
Motion carries. Mr. Conover.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good job, Christine. Thank you.
Commissioners, next item on the agenda is item 11B, Planning Commission Proposed 2022 Annual Regular Agenda. Presenting this evening is Becky Parkinson, Planning Commission Clerk.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Becky.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conover. I cannot believe it's that time of year again. We're heading towards the holidays. And I'm bringing to you tonight the proposed 2022 regular meeting schedule. The Planning Commission holds the regular meetings every third Wednesday of each month, with the exception of December, if you would like to change that to the second Wednesday because of the holidays. There are special meetings held January through October, if needed, for additional time from the regular meetings, or joint public hearings, or for a special meeting, such as the one that's gonna happen on October 27th for the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan. We also have some work sessions that are, come forth on the fourth Wednesday as well, when needed. So there is no fiscal impact on changing December to the second Wednesday and have January through November on the third Wednesday, as noted on the attached chart. So the staff seeks Planning Commission approval and/or amendments to the attached proposed 2022 schedule.
So Becky, what you provided is the optimum schedule for next year?
Yes, that is the third Wednesday for each month, with the exception of December, which would be the proposed second Wednesday due to the holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you. Any discussion by any commissioners? Mr. Conover?
Just looking for a motion, sir. Motion from the Commission to accept the proposed agenda as presented.
I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the schedule I presented.
Commissioner Tuohy, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy.
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, members.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Okay, commissioners, our next item is item C. It's a meeting topic you've seen before. This is for hybrid meetings. And during September's meeting, the Planning Commission voted to continue virtual meetings for staff monitor and report on the metrics of the pandemic in Calver County and to revisit the topic of virtual meetings versus hybrid meetings in October. This was so that the meeting formats for this November and December could be discussed. I provided the following snippets from certain research that I did on the internet, and I cited the locations of where they came from. For the commissioners, as you can see, some of these are quite dated by almost two weeks or more. I'm not a doctor, so I'm not gonna try and interpret these for you. But if you have any questions, these slides were provided. So the topic for tonight... So the topic for tonight, commissioners, is if the Planning Commission would like to continue holding virtual meetings through November and December, or they take a different action.
Well, part of the reason why we continued this, because the HEV was... You know, we really didn't have that full operational, and I think we wanted to make sure logistically we were prepared for that. I'm going to open the floor for discussion to see what the will of the commissioners are as far as going back in person. I would like to, at some point, start working our way back to in-person. But of course, it's at the will of the commissioners. So floor is open for any comment.
Hey, Paul, can we see that slide, the last slide you had up there of the Calvert numbers, please?
Yes, sir. It's gonna take me one second to get that. I apologize. You said the last slide, is that correct?
Yeah. I think it was a bar chart, I believe.
Uh, this was the last slide, word graph. Then there's this one.
I'm not seeing it. Not seeing it.
Oh. All right, tell me if you see it now.
Yeah, it's coming up there.
That's it, okay.
So Greg, what are you seeing here, bud?
I see our percent positive rate, 923 thereabouts, was high, and it's starting to trend down. And hopefully, it will continue to trend down. So it would be good if we could meet in person next month. But that's just my point of view right there, so... But watching that number, though, as long as it's continuing to trend in a downward direction, I think we... Take a swing at it. Take a swing at it.
Is that a motion?
After some more discussion, I want to hear from some other people, though.
Okay.
If I could jump in, upon the discussion that you had, if you could also consider if you're going to allow hybrid, which would be in-person and virtual, not just in-person.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I think, or at least my understanding, and we'll include that, that that was... Yeah, that's what we all want. I think we've all agreed upon that part of it. It's just that we're not actually going to go back in person, so... Floor is open, folks. Speak your mind. Greg, floor is yours.
I make the motion, then we go back to an in-person meeting beginning in November, and that'd be a hybrid meeting. And the future meetings be hybrid meetings as well.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, and seconded by Commissioner Tui. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tui?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Conover?
Thank you, commissioners. Next item on our agenda is Item 12. There are five items of interest. The first item tonight is the Prince Frederick Council and Master Plan Update. Presenting this evening is Jenny Pummel Welker, AICP and Long Range Planner. Jenny?
Good evening, commissioners. Glad to be with you this evening. I am joined by Tamara Blake Wallace, Principal Planner, Ruth Davis Rogers, Planner 2, and Jessica Gattano, Planner 1, of the Long Range Planning Team. They join me this evening. You received a staff memorandum about the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan Update, dated October 8th, in advance of your meeting. At the Planning Commission's meeting on September 15th, the Planning Commission directed staff to summarize comments by topic to have a clear understanding of concerns, and return to the Planning Commission the next month, which is this month. The Planning Commission voted to extend the comment period from September 1st to October 1st at the request of the Legal Women Voters of Calvert County, and to move the presentation to October 27th. The meeting is scheduled for 7:00 PM. It is a virtual meeting. The purpose is for the Planning Commission to consider comments received from agencies and the public through October 1st, and to discuss what changes to make to the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan, the July 2021 draft. The Planning Commission discussed last month to allow people to speak on the draft master plan. Interested persons are invited to sign up to speak. In addition, attendees who have not registered to speak may indicate at the beginning of the meeting that they wish to do so. While the Planning Commission's special meeting is not a public hearing, we will be following the public hearing protocols for speaking, which is two minutes for an individual and for five minutes for a person designated to represent a group. I do have two slides to share this evening, so let me do that briefly. The... Besides the introduction slide...
What's up?
Is the slide that shows where we are in the process. The Planning Commission endorsed a three-phase process to update the town center master plans, identify issues, develop the plan, and then the adoption phase. We are near the end of the develop the plan phase, and so we're at the Planning Commission review. I'll stop sharing now, and we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioners, the floor is open. Jenny, your presentation was so good, they have no questions.
Very good. I would like to note for the public, for anyone interested to sign up, there is a registration form that's available from the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan Update webpage on the county's website. You just click the button for to register to speak, and that'll take them to the form. Thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you next Wednesday evening.
We are looking forward to public comment. Jenny, you're not looking for any action, correct?
No, this is for information. Thank you.
Mr. Conover?
Thank you. That moves us on to Item 12B, Dunkirk Town Center Master Plan Update. Presenting this evening is Ruth Davis Rogers, Planner with Planning and Zoning. Ruth?
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Ruth Davis Rogers, and I'm a Planner 2 with Planning and Zoning. I'm going to share my screen now, and let me know when it's up.
It's up?
It's up? Okay, very good. As you know, we are currently working on the Dunkirk Town Center Master Plan Update process. We are currently in the first phase and working on community outreach and public meetings. Let's go to the next slide. There we go. The Department of Communications and Media Relations is currently working on our third public outreach video right now. The past month, we have met with the Heritage Committee on September 30th, as well as the Historic District Commission on October 13th to update them on the update process and seek their input. We are also planning our next public meeting, which will be a public education and informational meeting with guest speakers. We are currently confirming our last guest speaker and finalizing the date. And we, of course, will continue to provide updates to you as we move forward. This update is for informational purposes only, and no action is required. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Floor is open, commissioners. Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Well done. Mr. Conover?
Thank you. That moves us on to Item 12C, the Maryland Planning Commission Association Conference from October 25th to 27th, which is coming up next week. I believe that Becky has reached out to everyone, so if you haven't registered, registration is free. We can take care of that for you. But specifically of note, on Tuesday, the 26th, from 1:30 to 2:45, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Kernan, and Planning Commission Counsel Mattingly will be hosting a little over an hour session that we think you should all turn into. They're going to talk about hybrid meetings, transportation, and comprehensive planning, and then have a lessons learned over time kind of discussion. So that's all I have, just an FYI, no action needed.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda?
Our next item is Item 12D, just kind of rehashing the October 27th, 2021 Prince Frederick Master Plan Virtual Meeting and Presentation. And just touching on that again, it's going to be Jenny Pummel Welker, AICP, AICP, excuse me, with Planning and Zoning.
Just a note to mark your calendars for next Wednesday, and a reminder to the public that you'll be holding a special meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny?
Moving on to Item 12E, which is Site Plan Applications. Are there any questions on the ones that were included in the packet? Hearing none. Moving on to Item 12F, Subdivision Applications. Are there any questions on the six that were provided? Hearing none. Commissioner Jones moves us on to Item 13, Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan. Do I have a second?
Backing.
Second by Commissioner Tui. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tui?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners and to staff. Thank you all. Did a fantastic job. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a good week.
Thank you. And just remember, the meeting on the 27th is virtual, and then after that, Planning Commission meetings will be virtual from that point on. Or hybrid from that point on. I apologize. Thank you.